To discuss 2024. And in 2024, citizens of Greenbrier County surrendered 623 dogs and 68 cats to the facility. So the calendar year of January 1st, 2024. As is customary and the Humane Society industry, we classify these surrenders as owner surrender or stray surrender. And the majority of these surrenders continue to be owner surrenders. In addition to these 1,291 animals, GHS provided care for 117 dogs brought in by the patrol officer. Total number of animals in our care for 2024 was 1,408. 745 were adopted, 416 were adopted through our rescue partnerships. And we did have some wonderful return to owner stories, 80 dogs returned to owner and two cats. I will say, as much as we have attempted to keep length of stay for every animal on average, 230 days, it has not been as such in 2024. Collectively speaking, from 2009 to 2024, 27,534 dogs and cats have been surrendered to our facility. As you know, our goal is to save as many dogs and cats as possible through adoption and rescue programs. From 2009 to 2024, 12,996 dogs and cats were adopted or sent to rescue. And things have changed in a very positive way for us in the last 11 years as we have celebrated anniversaries for not euthanizing animals for space. We do still euthanize, 42 cats and 23 dogs were euthanized in 2024 because of extreme aggression and sickness. And we still do operate under the vet license of Dr. Pat McHale, and he is still our vet of record. One thing I like to always bring up is that we are trying to put ourselves out of the job. We have a wonderful spay and neuter program, and our goal is to reduce the number of unwanted animals in this county to reduce the number of surrenders that come into our facility. Between 2009 and 2024, this program has spayed and neutered 21,200 boarding dogs and cats. Last year alone, it was 1,276 surgeries at a reduced or zero cost to the animal owner, courtesy of a very, very generous donor. If you use an average of $100 surgery since 2009, we have raised and spent well over a million dollars to spay and neuter owned cats and dogs. What I want to discuss, which you will hear about from my next few slides, in addition to all of those owned animals that we have fixed, all of those 12,996 adopted dogs from our facility left our facility fixed. So collectively, 34,236 dogs and cats have been spayed or neutered since 2009 through our efforts. New county money is used for this program. GHS continues to have a positive working relationship with our ACO, James Shorebridge, providing two-way communication for the care of animals brought to the facility. We also work closely with the police departments in Greenbrier County communities to provide quick responses to assist animals and people in need. And as a reminder, since 2017, we post the at-large ACO intakes through our social media in another effort to try to help reunite animals and their owners. We have continued with the support of donors in the community, our local food pantry program. So in 2024, we provided 17,000 pounds of pet food, dry food, including 1,000 pounds of cans of pet food. So again, we're trying to help people who need help and keep animals in the home environment. And speaking of that, a new program we started in 2024 is we now offer responsible pet rehoming, which is a best practice from other facilities around the country where people who can no longer care for their animals, for whatever reason that may be, they can then now access our social media and rehome their animals from their home to another home with our support. And that way, it's another way for an animal to be rehomed without physically coming through our facility. They still have the option for the animal to come into our facility if that is, you know, a preference. But keeping animals in a home environment has been our goal with implementing that program. We've restarted, in 2023, we've restarted our foster program, Foster to Adopt. So that way, animals who may have special needs can be in a home environment. For animals that are too small and don't weigh enough to be spayed or neutered before they leave, it's called Foster to Adopt because by law, everything has to be fixed before they start spaying. So, you know, we're letting them take a small kitten, they just have to bring it back for us to fix, and then it's officially an adoption. In 2023, we also started a doggy day owl program. It gets our approved dogs out of the facility for a day, helps the dog, helps people, and then it helps promote these animals on social media, and we're hoping it increases their chance to get adopted. 2024 was a great year, but it was also a challenging year, just like 2023. Greenbrier Humane Society, just like pretty much every animal facility in the country, is feeling the challenge of overpopulation. And one of the big changes primarily since COVID is while we are still the voice for homeless animals in Greenbrier County, there are many, 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 many more people who have dogs, puppies, animals that may not have been fixed that are reproducing, and we are the outlet for all of these people. We continue to think outside of the box for ways in which we promote the animals. And we continue to try to implement other best practices that we've seen work in the rest of the country, such as appointment intakes. So that way, if we can do appointment intakes, we know what animals are coming on what day, and we can make sure we have the right animal care staff to in order to provide the care of those animals. And also to reduce surprises. I think a few weeks ago, we had 17 intakes in one day. That's what we're here for, but if we can do it in such a way that we can more quickly vet, vaccinate these animals in our facility, we can then get them out on adoption. As we move into 2025, we are going to continue with our programs on humane education, adoption and rehoming, and primarily increase our efforts on responsible pet ownership. We are going to be holding local workshops around the county to talk about resources available to pet owners, share some best practices of owning a pet, how folks deal with behavior issues. Our whole goal is to create additional adopters while also helping existing pet owners continue to be responsible pet owners to keep pets in home environments. So again, 2024 was full of challenges, just like 2023, but we are also very optimistic, positive, and have so many happy stories of things, wonderful adoption stories, wonderful stories of outcomes working with law enforcement and the ACO. And while the challenges do exist, we know we are the right organization and the right place to continue the work that we have been doing. That predates me, that little rose is all about. So thank you for your time today.
We appreciate everything that y'all do. I've been involved with the animal shelters we used to conduct since 2002. And was on the board, as a matter of fact, for 2024. Your spay and neuter programs, things like that are working very well because we were euthanizing 53, 5400 animals a year back then. That was pretty clear what we were going to opt it out and things like that because we didn't have the programming that you guys have. So yeah, it's come a long way since, you know, the last 20 years, it's come a long way. So anyway, we appreciate y'all's efforts and you guys.
No, I just thank you for the work that you do and know this has been a trying year. There's, do you know or have have an idea of how many times the shelter has had to be closed because of it being full this year?
This is, I do have that number, and it's actually pretty amazing to have had the community's support and willingness to work with us because in these situations, that means they would hold an animal, perhaps it was a stray, perhaps it was an own animal, they would hold that animal until we were able to have an appointment. I don't think any period of time was longer than 10 days to 14 days that they would have had to have held an animal, but collectively, over the course of 2024, it was 45 to 60 days, depending on how you count.
Yeah.
But during that time period, that does not mean we oppose law enforcement.
Right. Yep, thank you for what all of you do and all the volunteers. I know you have a great volunteer base, and it could not be done without them.
Okay, our second presentation today is Greenbrier Valley Offspring Mountain Association.
Thank you. I'm Josh Edwards. Ben Eisenberg, we're two of the board members under Warbot. The Greenbrier Valley Offspring Association, which I admit is an out there, but it really describes what we do. We are a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3) last year, and we are affiliated with International Mountain Biking Association. And our purpose, well, our purpose is to get adults as members of the community on bikes. We really want people to start riding, get outdoors, and enjoy everything Greenbrier Valley has to offer. Kind of historically, Ben and I know both are, and a lot of our members were co-shits with the Hellbenders, which is the Greenbrier Valley, youth mountain biking team. And in doing this, what we realized is a lot of the parents and the kids who were on the team were coming to practice. And we have, I was there the first year, and we had some practices where we had twice as many parents as we did kids on the team. So we realized that there was this unmet need in the community to get people on bikes and kind of help people along the path to knowing what they were doing so that they could ride safely. And so that's how we started. We started out trying to get kids on bikes and ended up with another organization trying to get everyone on bikes. And that's really what our focus is. What we're trying to do now is to create more opportunities. We have some of the best terrain in the world for mountain biking. I'm sure you all have heard of the, you know, the world championships of Betts Snowshoe twice. Our mountains aren't quite as tall, but we're not skiing. So the terrain in the Greenbrier Valley is perfect for mountain biking. It really is a great place, every bit as good potentially as Snowshoe. And what we're trying to do is capitalize on that and, you know, design and build trails in the Greenbrier Valley. So there are places for kids to ride, adults to ride. We really want to make it, you know, so that you can be a complete U B, have a good, safe trail that is trail appropriate or level appropriate. And also, if you're an expert, if you're one of those guys living in the back of the van coming around, or even better, if you're somebody planning your vacation to mountain bike instead of going to Snowshoe, or while you're going to Snowshoe, you're stopping in Greenbrier County to ride, eat at a restaurant, shop at our shops. You guys get the feel. And, you know, if we have better trails, every mountain biking trail, you can hike on it, you can run on it, families can explore. It really is a community resource. It's not just mountain biking. They are all available for mountain views. So what have we done so far? We've worked really closely with the Mont County Program, Monta del Heliado State Forest Project. So we've secured $2.6 million in funding for the development of a new bike park in White Sulphur Springs, and there are conceptual pictures of that that we've shown you. And we worked with Mont County, we didn't fit the $2.6 million ourselves, but we were part of that effort. We worked with the International Mountain Biking Association and the Greenbrier State Forest to design 20-plus new miles of trail in their forest, and that really is kind of the low-hanging fruit for Greenbrier Valley because that's where our trails are now. And we've got some great trails. The problem is, if you ride everything, it's maybe 15 miles a trail, and probably of that seven are, you know, expert. So you really have to know what you're doing, and a beginner's not going to be interested. It's just not enough to keep the fire going and it's moving, and it's not enough to get people to, you know, pull off at our exit and come to town. So we're trying to develop that so there's more for everyone. It's kind of funny, we lack expert trails, we lack intermediate or easy trails. And that's one of the things we found out with the Hellbenders is we either get really good bike riders, or we get people who back off because it's too hard to learn in Greenbrier Valley. If you're familiar with the state forest, there's, we call it the Hellbender Loop, and then we built a little trail called the Snodder Trail off to the side. That's down, it's kind of an exercise loop in the little area by the creek where it was, it may not be there anymore. You know, that's all there is, it's easy. So we want to get some easy trails, we want to get some intermediate trails, and really just get a better system there so that it can be a destination. Right now, we've got a patient foundation grant. We were able to build some features. We're going to put those in on the Figure Eight Trail, I think on that, it's the CCC Trail, down in the valley of the state forest. We're working with the state forest, obviously, as to where they want them. Coming this spring, and this is one of the big ones we want to get out, we're trying to increase our community engagement and get people on bikes. So we're going to be hosting a series of community rides, some mountain biking, some gravel biking, which is kind of a combination of river trail, you know, low travel road, that type of thing. So look for those. And we are really excited, we do want to get over on the western end, and we know you guys have spent a lot of time and money on the Meadow River Trail. I'm personally excited about that, looking forward to getting my kids out there. I think you guys know my dad's been involved in that. And we're looking forward to getting out there to the Warbot and trying to get some riders in the western end because that's certainly an underserved area of the county. So what do we have planned for the future in addition to the rides? We're working with White Sulphur to get lights for the Hope Village ball fields and to put infrastructure like bathrooms out there. And that is where the bike park's going to be, so it's going to be more of a community facility. We want to connect, and obviously work with the city and probably the county, give them a lab, to connect the White Sulphur Bike Park to downtown White Sulphur. If you're familiar, they've got that little walking path out past the, I think it's a nursing home and the brewery there, you can start on that. And hopefully, we can move that up so that you can access the bike park to your kid on a bike from downtown. And really, the why, we love bikes. I mean, that's what we do, we want more, we love seeing kids on bikes, and I know a lot of people do. From a community standpoint, we all live here. Some of us have been here forever, some of us were born here, and some of us moved here with the Ascended Program, which I should mention, the Bradley Lee Smith Outdoor Economic Foundation has been really implementing great in getting all this done as well. So a lot of credit to him for what he's doing. And we just want to make it a better place to live. We want to spur economic development so that there's stuff for our kids to do and career paths that they can proceed here. And recreation is something we have. We have a great place for mountain biking that's really unique. You know, world-class mountain biking could literally be out of all of our front doors. And that's our vision of what we want to see. I appreciate your time. You want questions?
No, I, of course, when you all had your program there at the Convention and Visitors Bureau back last year, saw the plans and everything, I know you've worked, had a tremendous, you know, group working with the Mont County Program to just develop the entire project. So I know it's been a lot of, a lot of work, but I know there is a lot of interest because your program has grown tremendously since you started, so.
And we appreciate your comment and appreciate your support and really appreciate the amount of your prayers.
Will this be, I'm going to go ahead.
All right, thank you for coming today and appreciate the information.
Will this be, so when you pull into the parking lot at Hope Village, is it going to be to the right of the ball fields, is that correct? In that field area?
I'm not directly involved in the planning, so I don't want to connect.
Part of, well, go ahead.
I believe so, but that's part of the project right now is developing all of those plans and finishing out exactly where it will be, which hopefully will be done in a year, and then we'll go into construction after that.
Yeah, okay. I was just wondering, we just poured concrete for a new batter's cage, and I just wanted to make sure it wasn't anywhere else.
We're all connected to that.
I think it's also going to, isn't it part of it, or there's going to be access to the mountain because the goal is, not the mountain, but the goal is to utilize the area, plateaued area up behind you.
Correct, more, yeah, create more trails. And as Josh said, especially with that park, it's to create different venues for different rider types. So we get people out there learning, certain obstacles, so once you get in the woods, you're a little bit more comfortable. So it's a huge opportunity. It'll be right, it'll be a major attraction for White Sulphur as we build that, so we're pretty excited about it.
Well, thank you all for coming.
Thank you, and I'm sorry to leave, but you guys are the judges of the county.
You all have, and Humane Society, you're welcome, you don't have to stick through all of our stuff.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all for coming.
Okay, we'll move on to regular business. First thing on the agenda is approve the minutes of the February 11th, 2025 regular meeting, and February 16th, 2025, and March 17th. Got a chance to look it over, like we have a motion to approve.
I would make a motion to approve those minutes as they've been presented.
All those in favor, sign the same name.
Aye.
The settlements of states, Mary Ingles, our district chair supervisor.
Hello. I have the following nine estates up for final settlement. Cecilia Lynn Aaron, Dorothy Lillian Cactus, Becky Sue Alexander, David Herman Joyce, Lula Beard Collins, Betty Jane Scars, Lula Fay Rice, Robert Lee James, and Hannah Finley Cullen. All these estates are in.
David, we have a motion to approve the states as presented.
Motion to approve the states as presented.
Aye.
Yeah, exoneration's kind of splits into solidations. We have the property exoneration as presented by the assessor's office. Do we have a motion to approve those as presented?
I would make a motion to approve the three exonerations that have been presented.
All those in favor, sign the same name.
Aye.
Financial approvals are, Candy Cracker, Louie Milkson, they will be with us today, so Kelly Banton will be doing this for us.
Arts and rec transfer, I don't have any. Budget revisions, we have several of those. I have five of them. The first one is to increase emergency services telephone line item of 711 to 11 by $19. That was just where something was coded out of a different line. Then I have a request, a budget revision to increase 405341, which is the prosecutor's supply line, in the amount of $152.74, and that is for a payment they received from Quill. Sheriff has presented the law enforcement retirement 70106 to increase it by $660, and law enforcement overtime 70108 by $5,280. That $80, that is a total of $5,940, and that is for payments from the osteopathic school for overtime. We have law enforcement retirement 70106 by $660, and law enforcement overtime 70108 by $1,320. It's a total of $1,980, and that is for a payment for overtime from Avia Gen Turkey. And lastly, there is to increase law enforcement overtime 70108 by $6,640, and that is going to be for the overtime payment from the Board of Education.
Anybody ready to motion to approve the budget as presented? All those in favor, sign the same name.
Aye.
Finally, I can transfer them?
There are none.
Okay, and I picked up the bills for you with us, but anyway.
They have been done.
All three commissioners have looked at the bills for the last couple of weeks and have signed off on them, so we have a motion to approve the bill.
So, yes.
Okay, all those in favor, sign the same name.
Aye.
Okay, quick question.
Okay. I would request that we have move item number eight, which is the last item on the agenda, up to the first item of business, as we have a guest here to speak regarding that item.
Okay.
Would you like me to make a motion?
No, we don't need to make a district vote.
I'm good.
We're good with that. So you want to make a comment on the resolution?
Sure. So thanks for having me.
Thank you for coming.
Can you introduce yourself for me?
Yeah, I'm Becky Harless. I am the C A O at G B M C Greenbrier Valley Medical Center, part of the larger C A M C Mandalia network, we're 17 hospitals across the state now. So what I'd like to do is start off by reading kind of what we sent to the legislators a week or so ago, and then I'll talk to you about what I think the impacts are locally. But what we said to the House of Delegates says, "We are reaching out to you at Mandalia Health, which consists of C A M C Davis Health and Mont Health, on an urgent matter regarding repeal of C O N in West Virginia. We are writing you as your constituent representing one of the largest employers in your district, employing more than 13,000 employees and having conducted over 2.3 million patient care contacts throughout West Virginia to express our strong opposition to repealing West Virginia's certificate of need law. This critical healthcare program ensures that our communities maintain high-quality healthcare close to homes. There's a lot of misinformation surrounding C O N laws and its impact on healthcare in West Virginia. There's a myth that eliminating C O N in West Virginia will create a free market in healthcare. The fact is that with or without C O N, West Virginia healthcare system is not a free market. Currently, 75% of hospital payments come from government payers that pay below the cost of care. Repealing C O N will have consequences such as an influx of out-of-state providers, cherry-picking commercially insured patients, and more profitable services, while essentially, community health services become financially unsustainable. The bill will jeopardize Mandalia Health's ability to continue to provide NICU, PICU, which is neonatal and ICU, pediatric ICU, trauma services, pediatric services, transplant services, oncology services, recap services, and our ability to continue needed services in rural communities. Opening the door to those who focus on a discrete subset of patients and services undermines the ability of our West Virginia-based hospitals to provide a hometown system of care that serves everyone, not just a select few. I urge you to strongly oppose any attempt to repeal West Virginia's certificate of need program, any weakening of these regulations, that has serious unintended consequences for healthcare access in our state, particularly in rural and underserved areas. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I appreciate hearing your position and opportunity to discuss. So again, thanks for letting me be here to discuss. We have around 500 and some employees, 520, somewhere in that neighborhood. We have around 500 and some employees, 520, somewhere in that neighborhood. We, we see a tremendous amount of patients from Greenbrier County, Monroe County is our primary service area. And, and I think, you know, the, the main services that we look at with any hospital, community hospital, you have programs that you offer that, you know, provide for the other programs who do not pay for themselves. And I think that's what's really at, at risk here, is when we talk about the pediatric and, and you look at the, the mix of the patients that we see, there are 75%, it's a little higher really in, in our local area with the governmental payers, just being able to continue to provide the care and stay substantially viable. I think locally, moving from an out-of-state for-profit company to an in-state not-for-profit, you know, ownership of this hospital has provided us the opportunity to expand services, things that we weren't able to offer in the past, we're looking to offer here soon. So those are things that I think is very important of, of your efforts here to, to support not repealing CON.
You know, I had spoken to a few people I knew, none of them healthcare, weren't doctors, people who worked there. Also, one of our senators in the last week about this, and the, I guess the thought of repealing it was that it would create more competition and about cost, but in reality, it's, it, you cannot continue to expand your facilities and grow if you are, if you're part of the package, get cut down and, and there's underserved people come in and take away part of the services. So, you know, that's, that was general consensus of everybody that I spoke with. So, you know, the bill that was put in down there did not make it out of committee, so let that stand for now. But, but I agree that in West Virginia, especially from now, we need to protect our facilities that we've got from, from outside of places. People could come in from other places, large hospital chains, and cherry pick off some of our profitable places, and that would really be the hope. So, you know, it's, so we're sort, you know, like I say, the main point is that they're going to need to continue where I did. So you guys have anything?
No, I, Commissioner Holiday and myself were both at the Capitol the last couple of days and, and talked with our representatives and Senator and, and other individuals about this issue, especially the fact that it was brought up at the same time. So, you know, I, I see the changes that we've had in our facility since CAMC has come in and been in our community and recognize it's also, you know, an issue for the osteopathic school and our hospice programs, which we have two wonderful, you know, facilities in our county with the osteopathic school and, and hospice that are both dependent or, or, you know, supportive of, of P D certificate of need. So, you know, at least at this point in time, the, you know, it, it seems that for West Virginia, that's, that is a much better path forward to have that, from my understanding, so.
I, I agree. I, I think the protection and the ability for us to be able to grow and support our community and be the hospital that this community wants us to be. And again, hospice, I'm on hospice board as well, so I'll put that flag in as well. It's very important, and that is a great service that hospitals do.
We are extremely lucky here in Greenbrier County to have hospice of West Virginia. They are a godsend to families. And I will say, reiterate what Tammy said about the, the hospital with Vandalia moving in, not only the patient care that has, I, I believe improved, but the overall giving back to the community that we have witnessed, the hospital giving back to local youth programs and different senior programs, and we just, I appreciate you very much.
I appreciate being able to come here and appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like us to make a motion, or do we need to kind of do another?
Well, I just wanted to do, since this is basically passed, how do we?
Well, it's not passed, it's going to come back.
Well, it's going to come back eventually.
No, I mean, it's going to come back in this session.
There's a Senate bill, there's a Senate bill that's there.
So, yeah, do we want to make a motion to, someone like to make a motion to do a resolution from us to be in support of certificate of need to our House and Senate?
I will make a motion for Greenbrier County Commission to send a letter to lawmakers, Greenbrier County lawmakers, in support of the certificate of need.
All those in favor signify the same.
Aye.
Thank you so much, Ms. Harless, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Beck.
We'll go back to our first item on the new business consideration of closeout documents for the Greenbrier County Broadband, Greenwood-Broadband project. That project became basically obsolete before it ever got to the point of being built.
We got a tower built.
We got a tower built, but.
I mean, it's the lawn of site power, so it, it does provide service to Greenwood.
But it won't make into same black and other places. So, anyway, Amanda, you have something on that?
Sure, good morning.
Good morning.
So, this project, as you, as you mentioned, was determined to be, that they decided to kind of roll these funds back into, into another program. They think BEAT is going to cover this area, and really what, what kind of spawned all this is the internet provider that was procured for this particular project determined that they didn't feel it was feasible for them to continue to participate. So once they stepped out, the state decided that we need to just kind of back up and let BEAT take care of this project area, which determined that this project would, would no longer need to move forward. So what they, we de-obligated the funds that weren't spent, and so that's where these closeout documents came in. It's a, a little bit different than most projects, because this particular project was funded in two separate phases, so that's why you have two separate closeout document packets in front of you. So the first one, which is project number 19 SCBG 003, that was the first round of funding for this particular project, for the Greenwood-Broadband project. That one was a total award amount of $583,000. The funds, the funds that were spent out of that particular portion was $57,084.90. So a total of $525,000, $525,915.10 will be de-obligated or given back to the state on that portion of the, of the project. The second phase that was funded was project number 20 CBPG 0006, in the amount of $668,227. Of that, $106,813.20 was spent out of that particular allocation for the project. So a total of $561,413.80 will be de-obligated or given back to the state out of that portion. So the project was currently in project in, in design. They didn't get past project design before we, we got back to the network design, and that school provider realized that it just didn't fit into their, their model anymore. So this project will kind of fall into BEAT, and the area from our understanding from the state is supposed to be by the BEAT project.
Amanda, have these, have we already received these funds and we're going to have to reimburse the state?
No, so it's a, it's a drawdown process. So the funds were awarded to the particular project, but as the invoices come in and the commission approves invoices, those, the specific amount is drawn down from the state. So they just have to kind of de-obligate them, say they're no longer going to be committed to this specific project. So, since that, long story short, no, we don't have to send any of that, it's already there.
And so there's no way to re-appropriate these funds to another project?
Correct, and that's what they're getting at. So they'll have to re-appropriate those funds, but they can't do that until the funds are de-obligated from this particular project.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the closeout documents for the Greenbrier County Greenwood-Broadband project?
So moved.
All those in favor signify the same.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next one on our agenda is consideration of payment of resolution number nine, Greenbrier County PSD number two, Phase Two Waterline Extension Project.
Leslie, are you on the line?
I am on the line, and good morning.
Good morning.
Leslie, how you doing?
I'm doing well, and hope you guys are too.
It looks fall where you're at, is it cold there?
I think it's cold everywhere right now. Actually, I love this picture here of, of the overlook there at Hawk's Nest, so it's probably one of my favorite pictures, so it's always fall at my house. So this morning, we have resolution number nine. This is for Greenbrier PSD number two, Phase Two Waterline Extension Project. And included in it for the commission's consideration is our invoices from the Thrasher group. This does include the retainage that was withheld as a part of the agreement between the PSD and the commission, the amount of $160,084.90.
Do we have a motion to approve the payment of resolution number nine for the PSD two waterline extension project?
So moved.
All those in favor signify the same.
Aye.
Thank you all, have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Number three is consideration of payment of draw request number seven for the Greenbrier County GIG Ready Project.
That one is, that one is me again. So we'll, we'll go through this one, so this one's draw request number seven for the Greenbrier GIG Ready Broadband Project. So there are three separate invoices, one to CityNet in the amount of $35,276.91. So as we go through these, that's the total amount, the commission is only obligated to pay 25% of that. So that total amount for the, for the commission is going to be $8,819.23, and the GIG Ready Project will pay the, the remaining 75% of that, which is $26,457.68, an invoice to Thompson and Litten in the amount of $37,900, of which the, the commission will pay 25% of, which is $9,475, and then the GIG Ready Project will pay $28,425 to that invoice, and the remaining invoice to Thompson and Litten in $61,800, of which $15,450 will come from the, the TIF funds from the commission, and $46,350 will come from the GIG Ready Project. So for a total of all the invoices will be $134,976.91, of which $33,744.23 will be from the, the TIF funds from the commission, and $101,232.68 will be provided from the GIG Ready Project.
We have a motion to consider payment of draw request number seven in the amount of $33,744.23.
I say move.
All those in favor signify the same.
Aye.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you, have a good day.
You too.
All right, number four, confirm separation of employment of Shelley Ott from the Greenbrier County Sheriff's Office effective date, February 12th, 2025. She, her date of hire was 4/2, 4/2, 2024. So we have a motion to accept the separation of employment.
So moved.
All those in favor signify the same.
Aye.
Number five is confirm separation of employment of Timothy Wilson from the Greenbrier County 911 Office, effective date, February 20th, 2025. Date of hire was 9/10/2024. We have a motion to accept that separation.
So moved.
Any of all those in favor signify the same.
Aye.
Page number six, consideration of professional service agreement for three plus one for cash vest liquidity, liquidity and treasury analysis.
I'm sorry, I don't have this, I gave it to Britt and I.
I'm sorry.
I didn't make it a copy, sorry. But I, this is a, a professional service agreement that the county is looking at to enter into with cash vest liquidity, a treasury analysis to assess our accounts and determine how, provide information of how best for us to maximize the funds that we have to be able to earn better returns on our funds. All of this would meet the guidelines of the West Virginia State Auditor, and of course, all three, all three of us have done demos and return, and, you know, reviewed information and, and met with the company to glean information about this. And so the agreement has been approved by our council, and I do have a signed addendum that has been signed by the company.
Everything good with you, Britt, on that?
As long as they sign the addendum.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to consider or to approve the professional service agreement for three plus one with the caveat that they signed the addendum?
I'll make a motion, we approve the professional service agreement for three plus one for cash vest liquidity and treasury analysis with the knowledge, or with the caveat that they cert, signed the addendum that has been presented by our council.
All those in favor signify the same.
Aye.
Okay, next one, number seven, consideration of remediation reimbursement agreement for the cost of demolition of commercial property located at 11525 Midland Trail, Crawley, West Virginia, partial ID number 11-77-62, and I guess that's what you're here to talk about, Britt.
Yes, the commissioner might explaination of what this agreement, the purpose of the agreement. As you all know, the Exxon station, or the old Exxon station in Crawley, was condemned, and the commission issued an order for its demolition, I believe that was. And it is not eligible for grant funding through the DLP program due to a variety of reasons. DEP has indicated that they would prefer those funds be used on residential properties as opposed to commercial, and also there are some environmental remediation issues on the site, which created some, I believe, some internal conflict with DEP. However, Exxon would like the building to come down so that they can perform their remediation on the site. Because we have the right of entry and we have an existing relationship and contract with the contractor who will be performing the demolition, instead of Exxon contracting for the demolition themselves, they would prefer if we would go ahead and perform the work and reimburse us for the actual cost. And so that is what this agreement is for. They have agreed to reimburse us in full for the demolition of the property. They even have a provision if we go over the amount, but we have a fixed, fixed contract with, with the company who will be doing the demolition. And so that is why you are asked to approve this agreement.
Did they respond to your red lines yet?
Yes, they accepted all of them.
Okay, all right.
Make a motion?
Yeah, I was waiting for you to ask.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Let's get rid of it. I will make a motion that we accept the remediation reimbursement agreement for the cost of the demolition of commercial property located at eleven five twenty-five Midland Trail, Crawley parcel, ID eleven seventy-seven sixty-two.
Do we have a motion on the table? All those in favor signify the same now.
Aye.
And it'd be nice to, we've got several properties taken out through this program. There's those properties all over the town. A lot of good comments and feedback from people. And that's this way. Yeah, a lot of people have seen this remediation.
It would be then available to be developed, so it's a great spot for somebody to put something into it.
And we appreciate Steve obviously for giving us four of those.
Absolutely. Just a wonderful job.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number eight is already taken care of, so anything else we need to do?
Yeah, just have an announcement. The twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan for Greenbrier County is currently underway, and we have a community survey that we would request and ask kindly to have as many of our residents and business owners and to complete. We have a website, a Survey Monkey website. They can go to the county commission website, www greencbarcounty.net. But we also have a Q R code that is going to be posted on social media, as well as advertised in newspapers, and information we could put on the radio. But the more comments we get back, this will give us an opportunity to work on future growth for the county, what, learn what everyone's priorities are. And it's a anonymous ten-minute survey, so we ask as many people as possible to participate in order to get your thoughts and opinions placed and recognized for the comprehensive plan.
Motion to adjourn at eleven fifty.
Ten fifteen.
In fifty-eight, excuse me.